Now call to order, the time is 7:30 PM. So, let's see. Can I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate of closed meeting number seventeen seven for the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Holmes. May I have a roll call vote, please? Yes. 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 The motion carries unanimously. Alright, can I have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second. Are there any changes or discussions? That was a motion by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Boyd. No changes or discussions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the motion carries unanimously. Do we need to vote for these?
No, we're not getting those.
We're not getting those, do we need to? They are, they are not? They are. Can you fill them in from your end? Cause they're not coming up on any of ours. Okay. So you're ready to move on? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November sixth, two thousand seventeen regular school board meeting? So moved. Moved by Ms. Boyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. All in favor say aye. 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 Opposed. The motion carries unanimously. Now we come to our favorite part of the meeting, recognitions. We will start with the word of the month, communicators, to be presented by James Monroe High School, Dr. Rochelle.
Hi, I'm Dr. Rochelle. My name is Kristi Hamrin, I'm one of the ESL teachers at James Monroe High School. And it is my honor and I am blessed to work with some of the most wonderful children on the face of the planet. And some of them are here tonight to talk to you, these are some of our ESL students. Who are gonna talk to you this evening about our word of the month communicator.
Good evening, Dr. Milton and the school board members. My name is Luis Garcia Ressa. And I am a second year ESL student at James Monroe. Tonight, I'm sharing the word of the moment, of the month, communicators. As a communicator, we express ourselves confidently and creatively. In more than one language. And in many ways. We collaborate effectively, listening carefully. To the perspectives of other individuals and groups.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Catherine Garcia y este es mi segundo año como estudiante de ESL en James Monroe. Un comunicador para mí es alguien que escucha bien. Me comunico cuando, cuando escucho y entiendo los muchos idiomas que hablo en mis clases. También me comunico cuando leo y aprendo buenas palabras y frases.
Hello, my name is Wendy Diaz. This is Catherine Garcia. It is her second year as an ESL student at James Monroe. A communicator to her is someone who is a good listener. She communicates when she listens and understands the many languages spoken in her classes. Also, she communicates when she reads and learns new words and phrases.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Wendy Cortez y este es mi segundo año como estudiante ESL en JAM. Un comunicador para mí es alguien que respeta mi lenguaje, me comunico cuando hablo en español y en inglés. A mis maestros y a mis amigos.
Hello, my name is Julie. This is Wendy Cortez and this is her second year as an ESL student at JAM. A communicator to her is someone who respects her language. She communicates when she speaks in Spanish and English to her teachers and friends, thank you.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Ysel Rodriguez Juárez y este es mi primer año como estudiante de ESL en James Monroe. Un comunicador para mí es alguien que puede expresar ideas en diferentes idiomas. Me comunico cuando escribo en inglés y español.
This is Ysel Rodriguez Juárez and this is her third year as an ESL student at JAM. A communicator to her is someone who can express ideas in different languages. She communicates when she writes in English and Spanish, thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Adil Akmal and this is my second year as an ESL student. At James Monroe High School. I am a member of a journalist class and a photographer. I took photos in this presentation. But being in the ESL program has helped me to, helped me, not only just me, but others to become a better communicator. I can talk with people more easily than before and have made more friends. Learning English has helped me to get a job and helped me to support my family. For me, being a communicator is a skill, a skill that we should have. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Next we have the Monroe Singers.
Can we give my students another round?
Yes. That's right.
Thank you for that. This evening, in celebration of the holidays, members of the James Monroe Choral Department will present Mary Did You Know? Please enjoy.
This is a new space, we have to figure out where we're going to be.
Mary, did you know that your baby boy will one day walk on water?
Mary, did you know that your baby boy will save our sons and daughters? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? This child that you deliver will soon deliver you. Mary, did you know that your baby boy will give sight to a blind man? Mary, did you know? Did you know that your baby boy will calm a storm with his hands? Did you know that your baby boy has walked where angels trod? And when you kiss your little baby, you kiss the face of God. Oh, Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Did you know? The blind will see, the deaf will hear, the dead will live again. The lame will leave, the dumb will speak the praises of the lamb. Mary, did you know? That your baby boy is Lord of creation? Mary, did you know? That your baby boy will one day rule the nations? Did you know that your baby boy is heaven's perfect lamb? This sleeping child you're holding is the grace I am. The grace I am. Mary, did you know?
Thank you.
Mary? Mary?
Okay, good evening once again. Chairperson Ream, school board members, Dr. Melton and families. I am pleased to recognize the following student who has been selected as the Optimist Student of the Month. Erin AJ Johnson, son of Mr. Kenneth Johnson and Mrs. Betsy Johnson. AJ is a senior at James Monroe. Thank you. I would like to start by saying thank you to our fall student athletes for their commitment to excellence, both in the classroom and on the field. Our field hockey team finished the season with a twenty-two and two record. This team made history on November eleventh. By being the first all-female team in the history of James Monroe to win a state title. The captains of this team are Lizzie Hamlet, daughter of Mr. Terrence Hamlet and Mrs. Julie Hamlet. Captain of the field hockey team, a four-year varsity starter. Lizzie was selected first team all-district, all-region and all-state. Maren Goodmanson, daughter of Mr. Brian Goodmanson and Mrs. Lori Goodmanson, captain of the field hockey team. Maren has played for three years. Ashley Kim, daughter of Mr. Juan Kim and Mrs. Yun Kim, captain of the field hockey team. Ashley was selected first team all-district, all-region and all-state, and was named the Player of the Year as well. She was also selected to the Freelance Star All-Area Team. I'd also like to recognize our coach, Ms. Jamie Tierney. Congratulations once again, field hockey. Our golf team finished the season nine and one. Marshall Wood, son of Mr. Ken Wood and Mrs. Rose Wood, captain of the golf team. Marshall was the Battlefield District Champion, Region Three-B Champion, and was a medalist in nine of ten district matches. For the third year, Marshall qualified for the VHSL State Match where he finished fifth to end his season. Abby Casperson, daughter of Mr. Matthew Casperson and Mrs. Stephanie Casperson, captain of the golf team. Abby played in the top six every match this season, finishing in the top four most of the time. She has been a consistent key to the success of this team. Mr. Greg Howard is the coach of our golf team. Coach Howard has served as our golf coach for the last six years. Congratulations once again, golf team. The Boys Cross Country Team was the Battlefield District Champion, placed second in Region B, and placed seventh in the VHSL Class Three Meet out of forty-eight teams. Mitch Dolby, son of Mr. Andrew Dolby and Mrs. Michelle Dolby, captain of the Boys Cross Country Team. Mitch earned all-district, finishing first in the district, meet, all-region and all-state honors this season, and finished sixth in the state. William Snead, son of Mr. George Snead and Mrs. Kristen Snead, captain of the Boys Cross Country Team. William earned all-district, finishing second in the district meet and all-region. The Girls Cross Country Team was selected all-area, placed second in the Battlefield District, was the Region Three-B Champion, and placed sixth out of forty-eight teams in the VHSL Class Three Meet. Jessica Conway, daughter of Mr. John Conway and Mrs. Chrissy Conway, captain of the Girls Cross Country Team. Haley Casperson, daughter of Mr. Matthew Casperson and Mrs. Stephanie Casperson, captain of the Girls Cross Country Team. Eva Kerr, daughter of Mr. Christopher Kerr and Mrs. Beatrice Kerr, captain of the Girls Cross Country Team. Eva earned all-district and all-region honors. Mr. David Lovegrove is the coach of the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team. Coach Lovegrove has coached cross-country at James Monroe for the past eighteen years. Congratulations once again, cross-country. Finishing with a four and six record during the regular season, the Varsity Football Team rallied in the playoffs to win three straight games and the Region B Championship. Omaro Barnum, son of Ms. Talarisa Johnson, captain of the football team. O earned first team Battlefield District and first team Region B Return Specialist. Christopher Reeves-Williams, son of Mr. Thomas Williams Senior and Mrs. Erica Reeves-Williams, captain of the football team. Chris earned first team Battlefield District, first team Region B Wide Receiver. Kamarge Conaway, son of Mr. Carl Conaway and Mrs. Kimberly Conaway, captain of the football team. KJ earned first team Battlefield District, first team Region B, first team all-area Freelance Star Linebacker. Next I have Dylan Major, nephew of Mr. George Major and son of Ms. Christine Major, captain of the football team. Dylan was injured this year and missed several games, however, he earned honorable mention for the Battlefield District. Carrie Young, son of Mr. Richard Young and Mrs. Tracy Young, captain of the football team. Carrie earned first team Battlefield District and first team Region B Offensive Line. Erin Johnson, son of Mr. Kenneth Johnson and Mrs. Betsy Johnson, captain of the football team. AJ earned first team Battlefield District and first team Region B Running Back. Our football team has been led by Coach Survey for the past thirty-two years. This team demonstrated never doubt a yellow jacket. They left it all on the field on Saturday, we want to congratulate them once again. For a job well done. I just learned that AJ and Carrie just got selected to play in the All-State game.
Yes.
All-Star game.
All-Star game.
On?
December sixteenth.
December sixteenth. Congratulations all.
On behalf of the board, thank you for coming. This evening, at this time, we'll take a brief pause for any of you who would like to leave. But anyone who wants to stay is welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for telling us that, thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done.
That was a great quote, Coach. That was a great quote they had of you in the paper. Of us not having the biggest kids, the best hearts and biggest hearts.
That's great, thank you.
Alright, now we come to the hearing of citizens. Do we have any citizens wishing to address the board this evening? No? Onto the consent agenda.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as presented with the following items. Head start approvals, annual lease agreement for Boys and Girls Club, additional extracurricular activities at Walker Grant, and disposal of surplus property.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Richard, second by Ms. Boyd. Do we need a roll call vote?
There it is.
Oh yeah, now it's come up, okay. So, all those in favor, say aye, or vote on your? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the vote passes unanimously. Onto action items.
I recommend that the board approve the personnel schedules as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richard, second by Ms. Holmes, any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Next we come to informational items, the financial report.
Good evening. Before you, it's October thirty-first, year-to-date budget status report, and just briefly, there's nothing unusual on the horizon. I do want to let you know, we just received over the weekend our prior year fund balance information, so, next school board meeting, we'll be bringing a resolution to designate and reserve those funds for specific purposes as the board sees fit. At this time, are there any questions from the review of this month's report that I can answer for anyone?
Do you have any concerns at this time?
No, it's early in the year and we run a pretty tight ship around here, so it's going very well right now.
The next item is the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, or twenty nineteen budget calendar.
Before you, we have some projected dates for the budget development cycle. We do have preliminary meetings, we've already gone through almost all of those with the administrative staff. We have a few left, and then, you know, the governor's budget will probably be put out. I think our last day in the building is the nineteenth, so it'll probably come out that evening at about four thirty-five, I'm guessing. And we'll get that back to you as soon as possible thereafter. I know that Dr. Melton has a number of meetings he's going to and keeps in touch at the state level, and I do my part as well, so, we'll let you know how things are progressing as soon as we find out.
Basically, we're gonna have an update, we'll have our first meeting in January, which will be our first time looking at it. And then an update really monthly until we approve it.
In January, we do our work session. February, we've put everything together and make a presentation to the board, and then in March, you approve the budget.
The only piece of information we have so far is the biennial local composite index was put out. And that drives a lot of our funding at the state level. And it increased to our advantage, but only by point oh oh six one. So it won't have a significant influence on any of our numbers this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so the Spotsylvania County School Board will host the Fifth Annual Joint Legislative Reception on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six PM. The school board meeting room of the Administrative Services Building. Eighty-twenty Riverstone Drive, Fredericksburg. School board members and central office staff are invited to participate. To date, Senator Bryce Reeves and delegates Mark Cole, Buddy Fowler, Bobby Orick, Jennifer Carol Foye and Margaret Ranson are planning to attend. They are awaiting replies from Senators Ryan McDougall and Richard Stewart, as well as Delegate Nichols-Friedus. and Richard Stewart, as well as Delegate Nichols-Friedus and Delegate-Elect John McGuire. Robert Thomas sent his regrets due to a conflict that evening. Also invited are Senators Warner and Kane, Congressman Bratton-Wittman, and Governor-elect Northam and Lieutenant Governor-elect Fairfax. For planning purposes, we've been asked to provide a count by December 5th. That's coming up soon. Tomorrow. How many school board members and staff from our district will be attending? So, do we have anybody who's planning on attending? I'm planning on it. I'm planning on it. So, four? Four from the board. You. So, you'll pass that along to Spotsylvania for us? Thank you. Next, we have any additional information items? No? Any additional information or business to discuss this evening?
I did bring up, at the VSBA Board of Directors, they did bring up the Board of Distinction that we had, the questions that we had. And there wasn't a lot of support for changing things on Board of Distinction. It felt like a lot of the conferences that might be redundant weren't the ones that were required. And they said, you know, they want it to be rigorous. You know, we brought it up. We asked. We discussed, clarified, and no.
Okay. All right, any new business? School board budget work session. The school board will hold the work session, we just talked about this, Monday, January 8th, 2018, to discuss planning for the school board, the 2018-19 school board budget. The work session will be held at the Walker Grant Center beginning at 5:00 p.m. The board will hold its next regular meeting Monday, January 8th. Meeting will be held here with closed session beginning at 6:30. VSBA Capitol Conference will be held in Richmond, January 22nd and 23rd. It begins on Monday, January 22nd, at 1:00 p.m. Personal visits with legislators will take place on Tuesday, January 23rd. Please let Ms. Wright know if anyone wishes to attend. Jan is going?
And just to clarify, the work session is open to the public? Bring your friends.
All right, and the VSBA orientation for new school board chairs and vice-chairs, board members and superintendents is in Richmond, January 23rd. Good of the order. Anyone have any items for the good of the order?
We won't meet again until after the holidays, so I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday, no matter what, whatever anybody celebrates. And enjoy the break. Be safe.
All right, so then now we come to German.
Oh, you know, for good of the order, can we just say, like, we did meet with, Representative Whitman was here last Monday and toured the new Walker Grant Center. And then we took him to JM so we could talk to him some more about career and technical education, and the importance of career and technical education, and the importance of having funding for career and technical education. He was a really good sport. He was very personable with all of the students. And I feel like, you know, he, and we talked to him about lots of things at each stop. But he was, you know, it was nice of him to make the time. We had invited him. Sometimes people come, sometimes they don't. But he was here, he got to meet our students, he got to see what we do. So, I think it's important to mention.
Thank you for escorting him. You had Ms. Boyd. All right, anything else?
Oh, December 9th is, UMW is hosting City Schools. Mr. Rush sent out an announcement. But that's a really fun event. So, it's free.
Free for all students and faculty, right?
And I think they could, last year, I thought they could even bring a parent. I'm not sure if that's the... I think so. They have to have a parent. Say it again? Elementary schools, students need a parent. But that's, it is, it's really fun. And it's a great way for young people to see UMW. And you get really close to the players.
Very good. Anything else? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second by Ms. Bailey, second by Ms. Boyd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned at 8:05.
Record, isn't it?